Evening and welcome to the Town of Rockland Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. Please direct your attention to Selectman Larry Ryan for the Pledge of Allegiance. Larry?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Are you still there?
Thank you, Larry. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and reported by WIPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It's also available live online at WIPS Rockland.com. And within 24 hours by video on demand at www.youtube.com backslash WIPS Rockland. Please go to www.wipsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, community announcements. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. We put on the agenda under community announcements, a formal, yeah, I was just looking at that too. A formal announcement for the public to know that at our next selectmen's meeting, which will be on March 16th, we plan to have the town moderator Kevin Henderson and I discuss potentially or recommending to the Board of Selectmen that you potentially reduce the quorum again for the annual town meeting in May. I just, you know, want to stress again that this is just the quorum is only the minimum number of people. Obviously, anybody that wants to attend can come. And again, it's not on the agenda for the board's deliberation tonight. This is just a public notice that at our next meeting, again, I'm looking at my calendar on the 16th is when we'll formally present that and you can deliberate on it and take a vote at that time.
So Doug, when, when the newspapers write the headlines on this, they should say that selectmen lower the quorum, lower the quorum tonight to a minimum, not a maximum, right? Because I know last time, I think we got a little bit misrepresented in, in the press with their headline saying that, you know, we were going to decide a $2 million budget with, you know, 15 people. So I just want to make sure the general public gets that, gets that message straight from us that, you know, we are setting a minimum, not a maximum, you know, the more the merrier. We're still dealing with COVID and social distancing, obviously, but if the entire town shows up, we'll find a way to accommodate you. So.
100% Mike. Exactly. Thank you. Yeah, that's right. And then I just, secondly, just, you know, putting everyone on notice that the warrant closes on March 12th at 11:00 AM for the town meeting law. And that's all I had for announcements.
Okay. Next on the agenda, minutes, open session minutes, February 16th, 2021.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the open session minutes.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Selectman Mullen?
Yes.
Selectman Penny?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda, under new business, bold calling the VFW Post 1788 Inc. Change Manager Request. Doug?
Yep, this is a very straightforward. You have information in your packet with a change of manager request for the VFW Post 1788 here in town. So no issues there. We recommend approval.
Motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Selectman Mullen?
Yes.
Selectman Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Okay, next on the agenda, vote to fill four vacancies on the Council on Aging Board of Directors. Doug?
Sure. So this is a little bit unusual that we have this many vacancies on the COA board to fill at once. But in your packet, you have a number of arms from different people that are interested in doing these and as well as a memorandum from our COA Director Peggy Brown. Yeah, is this better now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this weren't a good one. But Peggy's here. Why don't I let her speak?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. There is, there is a number. Unfortunately, we lost a few. And one has moved and another one has been ill. So this is the first time we've had four at one time that need to be replaced. There is four that I had submitted. I know there was one that came in afterwards. The four that I, you know, that the board has always gone with the recommendation of the Council on Aging Director. And I think you have the four that I have recommended. They are active members at the Senior Center. I feel that someone that's on the board should be an active member there, that they're there periodically, whether it's two or three times a week. They have started up programs for me. Two of the ones that have been on here, one volunteers for me on a weekly basis. And one is very active in the men's group. I feel that their chemistry with the rest of the board members that are there would work well.
Okay. So I mean, obviously Peggy, this is a little bit of a unique situation. I know normally we have, it's usually one open seat and one person applies for the position and, and the director comes up and says, okay, you know, we have a person for the spot and we generally approve the person. I think this is the first time, at least since I've been on the board, that I've seen five people applying for four positions on one board at any given time. So, you know, I, I think I'll, I'll open it up to, to the board. I saw, we've all seen the names of the people and I think every single one of them are good applicants and very qualified. And with that, I'll open it up to the other members of the board.
I mean, first off, I, I want to say this is, this is great. So we have not had, we've seen a struggle since COVID has hit. We actually, over the last couple of meetings, have talked about this, you know, about the need for people to step up. So to, to have four openings, it's unfortunate for the circumstances on why they are. But the positive is that, you know, we have five people applying for it. To that, you know, I'm on board with Peggy's recommendation. You know, we, we've had a history of letting the directors choose who's on their board. You know, she's already voiced that they're active members. I actually know a couple of them. And I know they're active up there. So my recommendation would be to go with the director's recommendation.
Okay, is that, Rich, is that, is that a recommendation or a motion or?
Not a motion. I, I want everyone to talk first before any motion. I wouldn't want everyone to have their say.
All right, anybody else? Any comments? Questions?
So, yeah, no, I'll start. I mean, one of the things, I mean, I agree. I mean, we've always, so like as a board, so like in, for like individual appointments, we've always tried to take Peggy's recommendation. But so at the end of the day, the recommendation, the vote is ours as a board. So, and I mean, we've, so I think as a board, we've always tried to take that especially seriously. Given the value we place on the COA, you know, and the investments we made in the programming and in the building and everything else. But that being said, I mean, I, so, so, so just because we have a recommendation from the director doesn't also like, oh, it doesn't also like respectfully mean that we so shouldn't entertain other options as well. So, I mean, and one of the things, I mean, we do have, you know, five very good applicants. Like we're also trying to involve more people in the community and really in everything we do now. So all I can, one issue is I understand that if we appoint the, the recommendations that the director recommended, we'd have a husband and wife on the board as well. So, I mean, and I'd like to, I mean, again, we've really tried to spread things out. So, I mean, I would, so I would prefer actually, so, so I would prefer actually like going with Mr. Schwartz, Ms. Williams, Ms. Lario and Ms. Murphy for that reason, just really to spread it out and make sure, you know, our whole community is represented in this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any, anybody else? Any, any thoughts on this?
I definitely want to go with Mike. Am I on here?
Yeah, you're on, Larry. We hear you.
I've got no vision anyway. I've got no picture.
We got you.
Oh, good. All right, anyway, I'm going to agree with Mike Mullen on this one. They're all good candidates. And they, you know, they're all qualifications, but, you know, I've known Pam a long time and she's got as many qualifications, if not more than all the other people put together, quite frankly. She's worked in housing and she's worked at the fire department. You know, she has all the town experience of Rockland Tribe Day, the stroll and 21 years of that. You know, nobody knows seniors any better than she does. She knows how to work with them and she knows how to get along with them. And I think that she'd be a good asset to the board.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Kara, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Peggy for her recommendation. I also want to thank everyone who's applied to be on the Council on Aging Board of Directors. But I also have to wholeheartedly agree with my colleagues, Mr. Mullen and Mr. Ryan on this one. I think we have a lot of great applicants in front of us, but I also agree Pam Murphy's volunteerism in the town of Rockland is top notch and I think the town will be well served by having her as an addition on this board.
Okay. Peggy, you're unmuted?
Yep, can I add something? I just don't feel that someone who has not stepped foot inside the Senior Center in the six and a half years that we've been there, what, what is the purpose of having that person come up just because she's been on other boards in the town? She doesn't know what the Senior Center is all about and I, I respect what you will, what you will all vote on tonight. But if you're going to go in that direction, I will, I will say that I disagree. I know what the Senior Center chemistry of the Senior Center.
So the two things I'll add is we're breaking from what we've, we've always done. And, you know, one of the things that, when I ran, one of the things I talked about was the, the political side and the nepotism and everything else in town. And I get it. I know Pam. I've known her my whole life. Nothing against it. I know these four individuals are involved day to day in the Senior Center. I know that for a fact. And we're also changing how we've always done things. You know, we put Peggy in place to run the department. We're not there. She's the one running it every day. She knows what she means in her department and she also knows, I think, what is best for her department. So I, while at the end of the day, the vote's the vote, I'm against going against the department head that we've put in charge to run that department. We're, we're making a vote based on what? You know, the other thing I'll, I'll add to this is I would love to have Pam become active again. There's a ton of the committees that we need. We could really use her knowledge and her support. I mean, there's openings in the Finance Committee. There's openings in the Charter Committee that would be immensely impactful. And I think Pam would be a huge asset to actually go into those boards where we actually need people. So that's, that's my last piece.
So, so if I could, I mean, there's a lot of things really to unpack. I mean, really, oh, my opinion, my experience, Pam hasn't stopped being involved in the town for, oh, like she's still involved in the stroll. She's still involved with Rockland Friends. Oh, any issue that people need help with, Pam steps forward. Oh, and I think, I mean, I think oh, I actually like in Pam's really her community service, you know, I think, I mean, like as I think Kara mentioned, it speaks for itself. You know, so just because, you know, she so hasn't yet been involved or really engaged as many, oh, as much of others in the Senior Center, you know, I actually think that means that she can help to bring a whole new group of people into the Senior Center as well. And I think, I mean, I think we're talking about someone like, oh, like they haven't been involved with their lifetime of commitment. Oh, too often has been just the opposite. Oh, in terms of not actually taking the recommendation of like a department head to really pick their bosses, you know, I mean, with respect, Doug doesn't pick to, oh, his five Board of Select members are, you know, what the voters do. And in this case, like the members of the Board of Selectmen, you know, like they pick with recommendations within for it. Oh, at the end of the day, it's our responsibility and I will to pick who sits on the Council on Aging Board of Directors. So I just want to mention that as well.
Mike, one distinct difference? That's an advisory board. The Board of Selectmen is not. It's a huge difference. So to say that they're Peggy's boss is not.
So, oh, yeah, yeah, we advise and we may, oh, like we basically mandate Doug, you know, to carry out certain responsibilities as well. And I, like I view it much as the same, Rich. So I'll just leave it there.
May I?
You may.
No offense, Peggy, you've done a great job and over the, over the place like that, but you're also going to retire within a year and maybe even sooner than that. And so I'm going to get a whole new director over there and a whole new, that whole change over people probably anyway. So, you know, here comes the change. The change is maybe starting. I'm not saying, you know, that your people are good people and stuff like that, but we do the appointing and I, and I think that we do a good job appointing people across the town. And I understand, you know, there's maybe some sort of conflict here and I'm not sure, but regardless of that, it's, it's our responsibility to look to the town's future. And, you know, in the town's future, I see a whole change of people over, over at the county, over there because you're going to be leaving shortly, from what I understand.
Well, that should have no bearing on anything because I haven't made my decision. I could stay.
It does have bearing on it, Peggy, whether you believe it or not. It does have bearing on it.
I might stay for the next five years.
Maybe, you know, maybe the, the sun will come out tomorrow too. Who knows? But that's a, that's a whole different problem. And the, and the problem is we oversee all these things for the town and, and we have, I happen to think that Pam Murphy's a good choice for that building, whether or not you think she's been there or is interested or not. She's worked with a lot of people. She's worked hard for a lot of people. And, you know, something I'm very inclined to give her the job and, and I think she'll bring a whole different point of view to, to the place in its, in itself. And, you know, we ask people to come and get interested job. Okay. So you've got somebody new coming who wants to get interested. It's, it's not, I don't believe it's against you. I mean, do you believe it's against you? I don't know. It seems to me like there's some sort of a personality conflict here and I don't see that entering into any of our decisions, to be honest with you. I just think that, you know, some, we oversee the place. We're the ones that make the decisions and, and the decisions we make, we think are for the best of the town of Rockland and not for the best of any one individual or, or group of people. It's the entire town that we're looking at. And, you know, something, and that's one of the reasons I'm looking to put Ms. Murphy on there.
Any other comments on this issue?
I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing that we're advocating for someone to be on the board who maybe isn't on the in crowd or, you know, very involved within the Senior Center. I know, you know, maybe she might bring a different outlook to the board and that might be a good thing. And I also want to make note that it's not that we're going against the director here. I mean, we are in favor of three of the four people that she's recommending. We are just adding one person that we would like to see, you know, with a different outlook and, you know, maybe not biased.
Mike, you unmuted? You unmuted, Mike? Did you have something?
I know, no, I agree with exactly what Kara mentioned. So yeah, like so I'm ready to make a motion whenever we need a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if there's no other conversation on it, I mean, I think everybody made, you know, pretty good points. You know, guys, it's, at the end of the day, this, this is, this is what we're tasked to do. It's, you know, our, our appointment to make. And, you know, to Rich's point, we've, we've always gone with, for the most part, the directors. I, I don't know. Rich, I mean, I went back today. You can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't remember since I've been on the board ever appointing four people at once for four open positions. That's like that, that was, that's a lot. Like I, I I looked at all the Council on Aging appointments that we've done and, and the other boards that we've appointed. It seems like it's always been like, all right, well, there's an opening and this person applied. So, yeah, that's fine. We get the director's blessing. Let's do it. Four people, that, that, that is a lot of people. So, you know, this is uncharted territory for us. But, but I do agree. We have always, you know, leaned on the directors for their recommendations and, you know, whatever the will of the board is, whatever motion is to be made, whoever wants to make a motion, we can start, start with that and find out where we're going to go.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I guess, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Gary Schwartz, Joanne Williams, Ellen Lario and Pam Murphy to the Council on Aging Board of Directors.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Yes.
Selectman Penny?
No.
Okay, and myself. Okay. So that's the, that's the board peg. Those four. And I will actually reach out to Ms. Conway, myself, and, and, you know, discuss the decision with her.
That's no problem. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Penny, for your support. I appreciate it. I disagree with your decision, as you will all well know, but I appreciate Rich, your, and I will work with anybody who's on the board anyways. I have no problem with that.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thanks, Peggy. Okay, next on the agenda, proposed gateway mixed-use overlay district zoning bylaw amendments for May 3rd, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. Doug, you were the gen.
No, I'll, I'll just kick it off very, very briefly and let, let Jen do all the talking. And I want to start by thanking her because she's really led this effort from the beginning. But we've been talking about this for a little while. You know, we were approached by a developer to, to consider a potential zoning change in, in an area of town. And Jen, with her background and her, her expertise, she immediately kind of saw that this was a bigger issue and needed a a larger sort of more thoughtful, comprehensive look. And so we've been doing a lot of work in the background and I think she's here to give you a summary of a proposed zoning overlay district that we are going to recommend the board sponsor and then refer to the planning board to follow that whole public hearing process through to town meeting in May for, for the voters to decide. So without stealing any more thunder, I'll turn it over to Jen to have her give a, give an overview.
Thanks, Doug. So as Doug explained, I'm here to provide the board with a summary and suggested motion for this year's annual town meeting specific to the Gateway Mixed Use Overlay District zoning bylaw. As Doug explained, this was a bylaw that had been brought forward or a concept by a developer that was interested in doing a mixed-use project in a district that did not allow for, where the underlying zoning did not allow for residential use. So over the course of the past 12 months, we, together with the developer, our land use council and consultants from MAPC worked to develop a more comprehensive bylaw that was consistent with the town's goals and current planning efforts. The mixed-use overlay district or GMod, as I'll refer to it, is just that it's a zoning overlay district, which means that the underlying zoning remains in place. People could develop under either zoning. If they, the district encompasses 140 acres of land. If a project proponent wishes to develop under the overlay district bylaw, if passed, they would need to apply for a special permit and the special permitting authority would be the Zoning Board of Appeals. Generally, the overlay districts intended to encourage mixed-use development of complex sites and redevelopment of underutilized properties. Some examples of what could be permitted under the overlay district would be multifamily residential, hotel, offices, retail services, general commercial, cultural centers, recreation centers, community facilities and/or grocery store. And again, that's just, just an example of, of a few potential development projects. Overall, the bylaw was drafted to encourage development with creative, efficient, high-quality design and planning, architecture and landscape design that enhances the district's visual character and identity of Rockland. We really took into consideration that this district is in the gateway to Rockland and what happens there is, is the entrance to Rockland and first impressions. The zoning amendment is consistent with legitimate planning processes and the goals and interests of the town. And the development would also, also has a potential, excuse me, potential to add to Rockland's affordable housing stock.
Can I pause it for two seconds?
Sure.
Hey, is Chris Benica on the, on the meeting still? Larry is booted off and he's trying, he's trying to get back in. Doug, can you let him in? Somebody let him in? He needs a host to let him in.
I will try. And if I see him.
I apologize, Jen. My phone is all of a sudden blowing up and I realized Larry's not on screen. Other stuff.
I think, I think I just admitted him.
You got him in? Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, Larry. I didn't, didn't know you were trying to get in.
Now you're muted, Larry. You're muted.
Larry, you're muted. Do you want to let me know what you last heard?
I'm going to go now.
Okay, do, do you?
I crashed. My, my, my screen went blank. I thought, I saw, I saw nobody.
Do you need me to back up and go over anything? Where, where did you, okay, all right, we'll go with that.
Thank you, Jen. I appreciate it.
So again, that, that's a summary of what the overlay district would entail. So this evening, I would request a vote of the board to sponsor the zoning and related articles to refer to the planning board as required by Chapter 48 for public hearings. Those public hearings right now are scheduled to be held on March 31st, I believe at 7:00 PM. And specifically, I'd ask the board to sponsor this zoning and related amendments and refer to the planning board for public hearing and amendment to the definitions and word usage of Rockland General Code bylaws, amendment to establish a new district entitled the Gateway Mixed Use Overlay District, an amendment to zoning map of the Rockland General Bylaws to add the new overlay district and amend the permitted uses of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws. And just a little explanation, when, when we were doing a zoning amendment, we change also the definition section of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with the permitted uses. And we change and amend the zoning map again to be consistent with, with the bylaw. And then it just establishes a new district, which is the Gateway Mixed Use Overlay District. I guess, are there any questions from the board or?
I just wasn't sure if you were set. Questions for Jen?
I'd like to just say it's an awful lot of work you've done, Jen, getting this, putting this all together. And it looks really good and it establishes direction for the zoning board and the, and the planning boards and, and the different boards in town as to what, what we can put where and how it all goes. as to what, what we can put where and how it all goes in. And I think you've done a great job putting this all together.
Thanks, Larry.
So I just really want to echo what, so what Larry has mentioned. I mean, overlay districts, as we know from the 40-yard district that was approved back in 2017, they were a tool. Like, and they're a tool to the town and they're a tool to be able to try to work with developers and entice really development that we want. So, and I think based on the definitions, based on the area here that's actually described, you know, I think this is an incredible tool. And I just want to thank Jen. I want to thank Doug, you know. Oh, like, and especially Jen on this, though, because, yeah, like, she's right. This is a gateway, you know, like, it really, I, I think, you know, the names we call it really defines Rockland and like, and I think we want our definition at, like, at this point in 21, like, in 2021, I mean, I think we want the fact that we do work with businesses, that we're business-friendly and that we try to provide options. I think we want that as our reputation, as our gateway. And I wholeheartedly think it's gonna be a great tool. And I wholeheartedly support it. So, thank you, Jen.
Anybody else? Any comments about the, the project itself? Rich?
So I'd agree. I just think it was, uh, it is the next step on the, the, the future and the development of Rockland. And every time that Jen speaks or Doug speaks, it just kind of reinforces that, I think, as a board, we made the best decision possible for this town. And I don't say that lightly. These are things that this town forever and a day never thought about. There was no, I, I don't, I don't want to say that there was no long-term strategy, but there weren't. There weren't the people in place. There wasn't the foresight in place. The details and, and I think the vision. And to Mike's point, this is a tremendous tool. Now, you know, the next step is trying to attract the developers, trying to do this smartly. But this was extremely well thought out and kind of gives that roadmap. You know, now the, you know, can we attract the developers? Can we do the, the things that really make the, the town attractive? And I think some people at home underestimate what, what the long-term impact can be. Right? So I, I know it's a constant, you know, taxes going up, costs going up. These are the things that we can do as a town to try to help the, the townspeople. And things in the past that we didn't, it was more of a scattershot. It was whatever came in happened to just come in, right? Where, you know, the work that was done downtown, you know, in that overlay district, this right here, we're starting to see real thought put into it in a vision going forward. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Yeah, I, I think obviously, you know, the creation of this overlay district will be, you know, hugely impactful for, for potential development. And the development, without getting too far into it, but looking at some of the things that are allowed within this district, it could be very exciting for Rockland and it could have a lot of things that, that we've been waiting for and that, you know, we as members of the Board of Selectmen have been asked by residents, you know, for many years, you know, why don't we have a supermarket? Why, why don't we have a movie theater? Why don't we have this, you know, or, or that? And, and the creation of this district specifically, we will really, you know, hopefully push towards that. And to your point, Rich, you're right. Can we, can we attract those, those entities, you know? You know, the, some good developers that, that are looking to work with us on, on some of these projects. And, and hopefully they'll be able to get that done for us. So, Jen, Doug, thank you. Thank you for that. And then thanks, actually, for, uh, for the time you guys have spent with me this week explaining it to me. So I, I had some idea what you guys were talking about when we came in here. So, anybody else?
That must have taken forever, Mr. Chairman.
It was forever. Smartest kid in summer school over here, Mike. All right, next on the agenda.
I'm sorry, did you guys actually vote?
Oh, yeah. Set my mind, okay. I'll extend a motion to create the proposed gateway mixed-use overlay district, or the GMod?
So yes, and we need to vote to sponsor it as our article, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Maybe as, as, as described by myself.
Did you say GMod? Do we have to say that?
Don't move.
So I would make a motion so to support and sponsor the proposed GMod district that has been so eloquently, I can't even speak eloquently, but very eloquently described by Ms. Constable.
Done it.
So I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, Vice Chairman Knottman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me as well. So Doug, just make sure the notes reflect the exact notion that Mike made.
Duly noted.
Perfect. Next on the agenda, proposed marijuana host community agreement use of funds policy. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. So we're, we're sort of getting into uncharted territory here. As everybody knows, you know, the state changed the laws regarding marijuana, you know, consumption and sales. And we now have two dispensaries in town that have been operating. And, you know, we're, we're happy to have them in town. And, you know, we're generating tax revenues as well as host community agreement fees. And I, but I mentioned the sort of uncharted territory because the way that our host community agreements were drafted kind of predated many of the new rules and, and advisories and legal opinions coming out of the Department of Revenue regarding how towns should handle funds coming into towns from host community agreements. The way that our host community agreements were, were crafted years ago, you know, talked about the town, you know, setting these funds aside in a separate account and being able to expend them without the need for future appropriation. But the latest Department of Revenue guidelines and advisories say, you know, no, in fact, you should not set them aside in a, in a separate fund like that. And no, you, you can't spend them without future appropriation. So, and then in addition to all of that, the Cannabis Control Commission is requiring all towns, including Rockland, to be able to document how, how we intend on using these funds, you know, for, for what purposes. So to cover all of that, we have sort of a two-pronged approach. One is, well, you know what, I'll, I'll just start with the document, actually, which is the policy. So what, what we're recommending we do is create a host community agreement marijuana fund policy that the Board of Selectmen would adopt that would address this whole issue. This introductory part just talks about how, you know, these are considered to be impact fees, which are coming to the town because of all the various impacts related to these facilities in town. And the types of permissible uses, we're trying to keep this very broad and not, not pigeonhole us. So it's not something you have to update each year. We're looking at potential available uses of things like traffic intersection design studies, environmental impact studies, stormwater impact studies, wastewater, public works, public safety costs, public safety vehicles, substance abuse prevention, school resource officers, municipal inspection costs, operations, public education, grants, healthcare expenses, as well as all the legal expenses related to negotiations permitting and enforcement. So this is literally sort of all, the whole universe of the types of things that, that these funds could be used on. Now, this last part is, is sort of the most important, what's listed under documentation. So what we're recommending we do, and you'll see it when I go through the list of town meeting warrant articles, is to, to use these funds for some combination or any of these allowable uses. And in particular, look at creating a special purpose stabilization fund. That's one of the things that in the Department of Revenue advisories and guidelines, they say is an appropriate way to handle these types of funds since we can't just kind of segregate them on the side without any other type of, you know, official action. So we're gonna recommend a town meeting, the town meeting established this special purpose stabilization fund, put all of our host community agreement funds into this, and then we'll appropriate money out for any of these appropriate purposes in the future. The first, one of the first ones you'll see is paying for two police cruisers rather than coming from our free cash. We want to take it from the special purpose stabilization fund once we put the host community agreement funds in there. So I know that's a, a lot of talking, but I just, we tried to keep it pretty simple, just two pages. I, assuming you adopt this, I would then plan on submitting this to the Cannabis Control Commission to satisfy the town's requirement for these are the types of things we're gonna be spending the money on. And then it'll also satisfy the Department of Revenue by creating that special purpose stabilization fund. And everything's transparent. The voters will be involved with everything.
Okay, any questions, concerns from, from the board?
So I got a question. So, I like the idea of this. So in general, where we, we start to, again, put things down where these funds go. The only question I have on that is, is there something down the road that's unforeseeable, that we don't see today, that all of a sudden, four years from now, we're in a situation and we're like, ah, crap, we, we really could use this money for X? Is, is there any? Because I know that there was some general, I know you put, it was general government.
On the next page, yeah.
Government operations, is that kind of a catch-all where it gives you some flexibility on, on where it goes?
Yep, and yes, but I would say in addition, Rich, I'm gonna zoom in, so it's even bigger. You'll see it says the following list with a footnote. And the footnote says, "This list delineated above is not intended to be exhaustive or exclusive and is merely provided as illustrative examples." So I think this gives us that, then, so this gives us that. And then also, you could always update the policy later and add additional things or amend it as you see fit.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Great job putting it together. Very nicely done. I think that's, uh, very, very, very smart on everyone's part to list them all there so that when, when we do want to transfer funds from that account to somewhere else, it's been in black and white from the beginning so that we don't get any, you know, nitpicking fights over these things at some point in the future. I mean, we're not talking maybe today, but I'm talking a couple of years from now. Who knows who's gonna be around or left around? And, and things may change and people's heads might change. So it's good to have this all set in stone, so to speak, so that if it's going to be changed in the future, there'll be something to discuss. You have to be something in place that basically allows us to do what we want to do with it when we want to do it. It is a good thing.
Doug, you need a vote on that?
Yes, please.
I'll extend a motion to adopt the, uh...
I'll make that motion.
I want a host community agreement use of funds policy. I got a motion from Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Rich. All those in favor, Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Suckman Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Next on the agenda, update on labor dispute at Woodya Square Affordable Housing Construction Project, Norman Street.
Thanks, Mike. So as, as the board is aware, there's a construction project underway right now at the end of Norman Street for a 40-day affordable housing project. And there's also been quite a bit of labor disturbances at that site, especially at the intersection of Norman and Concord Streets. I've even been contacted by some of the, the residents that live near that location complaining, being very upset at how some of the union protesters were, you know, impeding traffic and also even allegedly, you know, intimidating some of the neighbors and, you know, creating a real problem. So the police have been involved. There's been police details there on numerous occasions. And, you know, Chief LaWellon is a very experienced chief. He's really been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, both with the union and with the contractor to try to, you know, mediate and help them, you know, find a resolution. But unfortunately, it really hasn't worked. And these protests have continued to escalate. Had quite a few police details. But what's precipitating this update tonight in this discussion is that the general contractor, Callahan Construction, has recently approached the police department recently saying, you know, a number of these most recent police details were not called or ordered by the general contractor. You know, it's the police department that felt they were necessary to maintain order. And since the GC didn't, didn't request those details, they're saying they're not gonna pay for them because the general contractor pays for these details because they're related to, you know, labor dispute at their project. So it's creating a real problem because now we have, you know, these details which have costs associated with them. But Callahan Construction is unwilling to pay for them. So when, in talking to our attorneys to see if it's something that we can force the GC to pay, it turns out, and this was something new to me, I always learn something new in this job, we need to have a, a general town bylaw that would authorize the police chief to be able to force a construction company like this to have to pay for those details when the chief feels that it's warranted. And we don't have that bylaw in place yet. That's something you'll see on my list of town meeting warrant articles for this May. So, you know, we're hoping Callahan Construction is gonna do the right thing and, and pay for these. You know, and the chief is gonna continue to, to try to mediate as, as best he can. But I just wanted, you know, the board to be aware. And I also, I put this on the agenda or asked Mike to put it on the agenda, not knowing if there was some emergency action that the board could take tonight to try to address this situation. But there's really not. I, I've come to learn in further discussions with council. So we're, we're gonna sort of keep doing what we're doing. But there will be an article in the town meeting warrant to create a general bylaw that can help address this in the future. And I think we're also gonna look at, I'm, I'm gonna speak to our land use attorney and the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals to see if, potentially for future special permits and future comprehensive permits, if the ZBA could possibly put a condition in their, their, their permits that, you know, any types of police details that are requested by the police chiefs would have to be funded from the, from the developer, just so there's, you know, no confusion. So that's another avenue we'll pursue as well. So I just want to give you that update and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I, I would like to speak. Since it's across the street from my house that this goes on every morning, my one question to the police and to the union is this. How many intersections are they allowed to block? That we have to get a police detail for that. Why, why can't they block at the end of Concord Street if they, if all those trucks that tried to turn the corner onto Norman Street from my house can't get in because they're parked in the way? But the, but the actual site where they work is a quarter mile down the street.
Yeah, so I think I can answer that, Larry. That, yeah.
So what if, so what if they, what if they want to walk to the top of Concord Street and they want to block there too? And they say, you know, then, then to try to force the company to pay that extra fee? And that, you know, something, it's a question of whose rights and where? I mean, you know, can they protest anywhere and block any intersection they want in town? And then, and then we have to arrange for the company to pay for that? That's the, that's the issue. They're not, they're not working right at the gate to the place on a public place. They're, they're blocking a, you know, the neighbor's intersection and, and making it extremely inconvenient for an awful lot of people when the actual site is a quarter mile away down the street.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That, that's a good point. You know, I, I believe that our, our police chief has been, again, very measured and he's been, you know, trying to mediate and he's not been too heavy-handed in how he's been handling this. But I think now they're gonna, the police are gonna be getting more and more firm. And I think you're gonna see less and less tolerance and ultimately zero tolerance from impeding any of those intersections like the corner of Norman and Concord Street. And I think they're gonna kind of force those, those types of activities to the front of the job site, just as you highlighted, which is at the end of that dead end. And that, that's where that activity belongs. So you're right that that has been occurring, but I, I don't think that's gonna be allowed to occur any longer. But it's a very good point.
Another issue also becomes that these 40-foot tractor trailer trucks pull up and they have to block the street. And then they have to back down the whole of Norman Street at a very low rate of speed going by the obstructions put in there by the union. And, and also it ties up the neighborhoods, the neighborhood because they're showing up at 7:00 in the morning and driving down the street and taking 10 or 15 minutes when people want to get to work and go to, bring the kids to school or whatever. bring the kids to school or whatever else they have to do. So, you know, it's very, the very complicated and irritating situation that goes on there. And, you know, and I see it every morning, and I even recorded it a few times just to show people to stay away from that area at that time of day because of the problems that have been there, but again, I mean, you know, where does the intersection stop? Why did they get to protest a quarter mile from the opening of the site where the job is actually at? Why don't they come up to town hall and protest there or something, or block the middle of town, or block the fire station or the police station themselves? You know what I mean, where does it stop? And how many does the builder, and I'm not farthest project except for the fact that it's, you know, it's basically been stuffed down our throat by the state because it's a 40B. You know, they wanted to put another type of project in there, it didn't go, guy sold out, this is what we're going to get now. But the problem is, all the problems that come with it, for the neighbors especially, and I feel bad for the people that are parked that live, you know, all along that street now, because they, first they see the house valuations going down the tube, swirling in the bowl, if you will, and then they're going to have to put up with this nonsense every morning till when? You know, till hell thaws out, you know? It gets, it gets to the point of being a little bit ridiculous, and, you know, I understand the union's attitude, and I, and I understand that, you know, their protest, but you know, when the protest becomes inconvenient, not just for the company itself, but for an entire neighborhood because of the the way they're fighting it, I guess you'd have to say, I don't want to get too angry with them, because I understand that, you know, protests are protests and people are allowed to, but you know, it's all a question of where, how many, and who's going to pay for them, I mean, you know, maybe the union ought to pay for one of them if they're going to have the extra one. Maybe they get one, and then the union has to pay for one if they're going to be the guys protesting. I don't know, I mean, it's just, it just seems to me that, you know, that we're serving their purpose, the union's purpose, and I'm not against union, but we're serving their purpose by helping them charge the guy twice as much as he really should have, because he should only have one protest spot, and that's down the end of the street, in the opposite end of where I live. And that puts an extra burden on the people at that end, but it doesn't obstruct the whole corner of the street up the, you know, and poor old women and men trying to drive their cars around, and they're already, you know, afraid of these guys standing out there with their masks on, their signs, and their big hoodies, and, you know, and when you're, when you're an elderly person who doesn't really understand what's going on, it can be quite upsetting. And, you know, something that I know a lot of good people live on that street, and, you know, I can't express the sentiments that they express to me. But, you know, it's a bad situation, and the union has to accept a certain amount of responsibility as to where they're going to protest and how, because, you know, if it's a two protest spot, you know, they're only protesting against the town of Rockland, they're not protesting against the company, because now we're in a bind, we, they don't want to pay, and we're going to try to force them to pay because the union is a quarter mile down the street. And, you know, something, and I'm not sure who's going to pay, but, but the whole situation plainly just stinks, and a resolution has to be worked out between the union and the company or some sort of thing, because, you know, again, I'm not against protest, but it should be one protest spot, not two.
Larry, I agree with you, and I fully agree with you, and I believe the chief is on board on that point as well. I know the chief's also been trying to encourage both parties to, I forgot which court it would go to, but essentially have them go to court to get the rules of engagement set, you know, that that happens in other scenarios, and they've been unwilling to do it in a proper venue at this point. But to get to your specific point, I agree, and I believe the chief is going to be enforcing that, and it's going to keep everything down at the end of the dead end where the actual construction site is, so.
Well, I know the chief.
Photo share as when we have the draft of the general bylaw to show you with the warrant.
I know the chief is working on it, because I called him the first day that they showed up there. And I, you know, I didn't realize there was police officers on the, on the block too, and they were really obstructing the street, you know, there was, the whole street was blocked, in all directions, so. It's been a nightmare for the poor neighbors, I feel real bad for them, I'm in the house anyway, because I'm, you know, got nowhere to go and plenty of time to get there, so it doesn't affect me as much as it does them, but I've had the trucks run over my rubbish barrels, and, you know, knock my rubbish off to the ground, and I have to go out and pick it up. And, you know, nobody's, and it's, again, it's annoyance. It's annoyance, inconvenience, and insensitivity to people that are paying the freight along Norman Street.
And just for the record, when I mentioned at the beginning that some of the neighbors and the butters had called me, they were not very right. I'm being, I'm not being a hundred percent serious, just so we know, everybody knows. So that's all I had on that, unless there's any other questions, Mike.
Okay. All right, other new business not reasonably anticipated, Doug, nothing?
I have none.
Okay, next on the agenda, old business, COVID-19 update.
Thanks, Mike, so I do have, I do have a couple of COVID updates. The town is currently in the yellow, the category that the state identifies, and our current positivity rate is 4.22%, so we're moving in the right direction. As I indicated at our last meeting, we are still actively trying to get vaccine. Every week, we're putting in orders to try to get vaccine. The state is also changing how they're going to be allocating the vaccine district, excuse me, vaccine distribution for local housing authorities, so in the past, we were putting in two orders every week, one, one large regular order for the whole town, and then a separate smaller order for our local housing authority. The state's changed that, saying we no longer have to request the housing authority vaccines, they're going to send it to us directly as soon as it's available, because the state knows exactly, you know, how many housing authorities and how many units they have in each town. And it turns out twice now, we've actually been awarded vaccine by the state, only to have D P H turn around and say, whoops, they made a mistake, and then they take it back. So it's obviously been very frustrating for us, but we do believe that we will very likely be getting some limited vaccine for the Rockland Housing Authority, specifically for Studley Court and Garden Terrace. So we're pretty hopeful we're going to get that, you know, within the next few weeks, I'm not promising any date because it's too uncertain, but we believe we'll get it, and the way we're going to do that, since because of the more homebound population involved there, we'll actually have our fire department personnel, our paramedics and our E M Ts, will go to those locations, they'll go to Studley Court and Garden Terrace and do the vaccinations on site there for those residents. So we'll keep the board updated as we get more definitive information on that. Lastly, I wanted just to touch briefly on our initial thoughts on a town hall reopening plan. And I want to stress that what I'm mentioning right now is just for the town hall building, all the other buildings in town, whether it's the library or Council on Aging, you know, any of the other buildings, that those are all going to be handled independently on a case-by-case basis, because those activities are all different compared to what happens here in town hall. And I also want to highlight that what I'm going to refer to right now is, again, only related to town hall services for the public, I'm not referring to any board or committee meetings, just services that town hall staff provides to the, to the public. And then just a big caveat, which I have to do because we're in COVID, you know, this is all preliminary as of, you know, today, which is March 2nd, and this is all subject to change, and, you know, we're just trying to be balanced, giving all the different, all the different inputs that are being thrown at us every day. So the impetus for the plan I want to outline is the significant reduction in the state's percent positivity rate, so in Rockland it's at 4.22%. Statewide, it's actually down to only 1.77%, that's the current seven-day average. And in addition, the governor's also recently announced that he's moving the state to step two of phase three, and that was effective yesterday, March 1st. And further, the governor has indicated that if the public health metrics continue to improve, the state is going to move all communities into step one of phase four, which they refer to as the new normal, step one of phase four for their reopening plan, effective March 22nd. So the kind of general parameters that I'd like to implement for town hall would be to wait until the state formally moves into step one of phase four, but not earlier than April 5th. So it could be later than April 5th that the state delays that step one of phase four, but I don't feel comfortable moving to that point before April 5th. I also want to confirm that the town of Rockland continues to not be in the red per that state color coding system I mentioned earlier, which looks at the average daily incidence rate per 100,000 people at the time that we reopen. I'm going to want to keep the downstairs rear door, the door facing the high school, locked from the outside, but open the doors to the front of the building on Union Street with a, for lack of a better term, for now, I'm going to call it a greeter inside the building, and I guess the thing I want to highlight is, you know, a lot of the other types of businesses, whether it's, you know, restaurants, or all the, all the types of entities that are reopening more, they all have staff that are able to kind of control the scene and make sure that people aren't crowding together, and that people are wearing masks, et cetera. But as you know, pre-COVID, town hall was just wide open, and we don't have people there that can control that. So I think in order to keep this safe, both for visitors as well as staff, we're going to want to have a greeter there who's going to confirm that people are wearing masks, and masks will be required 100% of the time for everybody entering the building. We have these touchless temperature scanners, just look in this thing, it looks like an iPad, it immediately takes your temperature and can tell if you have a fever or not. We'll write down their name and phone number for contact tracing, and we'll limit capacity to only one person or a couple per department at a time. So if a department already has someone there and someone news coming in for that same department, the greeter will just ask them to wait until that department has room and can be, business can be done safely. I don't know exactly who we're going to have fill that role of a greeter at this time, it could be a town employee, could be a volunteer, or maybe even a vaccinated senior tax work-off program person. Also, we're going to evaluate whether we should consider putting down adhesive arrows on the floors of town hall to sort of mark the flow so that people don't kind of bump into each other or get too close to each other, kind of like what you see in grocery stores. So that's the general outline of what we're looking to do, I thought it'd be helpful just to let the board know. I know, you know, some, some in the public might be interested, but I do want to highlight all along, you know, sometimes people refer to town hall being closed, and while it's true that, you know, our doors are locked, we're open in the sense that everybody's been working, everybody is working and everybody has been working, and that to the extent that any customer has, you know, not for whatever reason been able to get their transaction completed over the phone, or through the mail, or online, or through the Dropbox, or any other remote method, we have been making appointments or just letting individuals in one at a time to conduct their business. So everything's been getting done, and so we have been open for business, it's just that our, our doors have been closed to help control the spread, so I hope that's helpful, you know, we tried to put some thought into this, and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for Doug? Good, so I do have a little piggyback to that COVID update. Obviously, we're having conversations about reopening the town hall to the general public. I for one think that, from our position as leaders in this town, that we should start looking at how we're going to go about holding our meetings in person, again. I know Doug's had a couple of conversations with W R P S, and, you know, I'd be, I think we look to make a motion tonight, some sort, saying that we're willing to meet in person, you know, provided we have the studio availability at W R P S. And obviously, after the conversations I had with our host at that point, you know, Doug measured the typical meeting room, the Manhattan Meeting Room, last week, and it really is no way for us to all be six feet apart, and the scenario that he described to me on the phone was literally one of us in each corner, Doug in the middle, and, you know, it's just, it just doesn't, it wouldn't work logistically, and we wouldn't be able to have anybody else in there besides that, so. You know, I think right now our options to meet remotely, I'm sorry, in person would be the W R P S studio, and really that's it, so. So I would entertain a motion to meet in person, subject to the availability of the W R P S studio.
So move, make that motion.
So I have a motion from Rich, do I have a second, is Larry?
I have a second, I already seconded, I actually firsted.
All right, sorry.
Can I make, can I make one clarifying comment before you?
Make the clarification, sure.
So one thing, and you know, I've had a number of discussions with Dave Cable Murphy about this, who runs our W R P S, and I know that we don't have sufficient technology to effectively be able to do a hybrid meeting. And when I say hybrid, I mean, say we have all of us in person, but we have other people on Zoom at the same time, so we don't really have the ability, you know, it's funny, Dave and I were joking about how CBS can do that easily on the nightly news because they have a billion-dollar budget, you know, we have a slightly smaller, you know, tech budget here, so I guess the thing. But, so I just wanted to highlight that we, at this time, you know, we're not able to do anything hybrid, so if we have, you know, there's been meetings like with Holy Family, we have a whole large number of other people that need to be involved in the meeting. I don't, I don't know exactly the capacity of the room, but I think those types of situations would necessitate meeting remotely until there's other technology available.
Yeah, I think we make it, make it something where, depending on what the agenda is as well, I mean, whatever the scope of the agenda, I mean, if you look at a meeting like tonight, you know, we only had one other person on throughout the entire meeting, so a meeting like tonight would be something that might have been able to be done over at W R P S in person. Whereas if, Chris, I noticed that you have your picture up, all of a sudden, there is space for us, right, and we're able to do it if, if the studio is available?
Me and Mr. Murphy are going through multiple tests daily, so we're just going to finish up that stuff this week, and then I'll talk to him more tomorrow, and we'll know more towards the end of the week, so I'm sure Dave will be in contact with Doug, so.
And the other thing, Mike, I'm sorry, and I'll stop, is just, obviously, the meetings would, the public would not be able to attend these meetings, so the public would watch them live on television, live on YouTube, just like they are now. So I just wanted to highlight that you're just talking about people that are involved in the meeting, attending in person.
Invite only, yep, invite only, so.
To that point, if we know that there's going to be, you know, the agenda is going to bring a lot of people, then at that point, we can, you know, have that meeting as a remote meeting. We still want to be able to practice social distancing, but at the end of the day, I'm on board with Mike that if it logistically makes sense and we can do it, then we should try to start doing it whenever possible.
Yeah, and I think especially with the fact that we're talking about opening up the town hall, I think it's, you know, to my point earlier, you know, we're leaders of this town, and, you know, symbolically, if we're asking, you know, the employees to interact with the general public, then we should be willing to come out and, you know, do a meeting, you know, together anyway, so. So with that, I think we have a motion and a second to meet in person, you know, provided the availability of the W R P S studios and with consideration of the agenda and who is on it. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, vice chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Buckman Ryan?
Yes.
Buckman Mullen?
Yes.
Buckman Penny?
Yes.
Okay, and myself.
One thing, if I could just add, Mr. Chairman, I mean, just, it's like, I know the school committee, I mean, in terms of the, you know, any presentations, or, you know, like outside people or technology that they're using, or oh, like anyone else outside of the school committee who is like actually going to present, they're really having like a lot of the same challenges, and I'm wondering if there's a way, like even like outside of the W R P S studios, if there's any, oh, you know, like the, so like the lecture hall, for example, like, do we have anywhere else in town that could meet our needs and the school committee needs as well? You know, like, as we consider these things, because it's not only, I don't think our board, who is actually trying to consider these things and get back in person, but, oh, I think, oh, actually, at some point, it would be helpful to understand, you know, what the limitations are of the different, you know, of the different spaces we have, so we can all be on the same page.
So I had made the motion to kind of limit it to W R P S studios, just for the fact that.
So, yeah, no, no, and I agree, but just going forward, having a broader understanding would be helpful as well.
Just to add extra to.
Yes.
W R P S, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, and Mike, with the other areas in the school here, right, you know, the remote, the remote, their classrooms right now.
The remote, their classrooms right now. So I don't know how much you guys could come in and get done, let's say in the auditorium, just because right now they're classrooms. And we don't know what they're going to be, so.
Yeah, no, I get it wholeheartedly. This is, this is crazy for everybody, so.
Mike, can I just clarify two, two other things?
Absolutely.
That's okay. Um, one is just as a reminder, you know, everybody will still need to wear a mask because we're indoors. So we'll have to wear a mask throughout the duration of the meeting for the state rules. And then also my. Recommendation and what I would request is that this only apply to the Board of Selectmen. We have a lot of other boards and committees, especially all the regulatory boards that. They, again, we can't do hybrid meetings and they, and there's just no way to successfully do that. So I would hope that we're only talking about the Board of Selectmen right now.
That, that is all we are talking about is the Board of Selectmen. I, I don't think it'd be appropriate at this time or there's really much of a need. And I think. To this, to your point, you know, committees like the. Conservation Committee or the ZBA. They have very large crowds that potentially attend those meetings. So I, I think the, the remote meeting, the Zoom meeting actually probably works better to allow people to voice their opinion in a, in a safe distance. So yeah, that only applies to, to this board in particular. And, you know, WRPS has a, has a full enough schedule as is, and, you know, I, I appreciate their willingness to accommodate us in. In this circumstance. And if, if there's a time that they can't and they double books, then we'll go back to, to doing it remotely for that specific meeting. But, you know, I think just, just showing our willingness to, to meet in person and kind of get out in front of this thing i- is important for the townspeople to know. Okay, any other questions? Comments? Okay. Next on the agenda, updated list of May 2021 town meeting warrant articles. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. I'm gonna share my screen with the latest list of warrant articles, which I, this is the same as what's, what's in your packet. And again, this is, you know, this is not final yet, but this is my latest. Our latest and greatest. Draft. So we have the special, which would be. Using, using free cash to help close out. The current year and then. Creating the host community agreement, special purpose stabilization fund that I mentioned before, and we'd like to do that in the. Special because we already have the cash in hand. So we think it's. Proven to do it, you know, now while we're still in the current fiscal year. We have about 50 articles. I'm not going to go through and read every one. You've got them all in your packet. But just to highlight a couple that are, that are a little. Different from prior years. Again, we're looking at establishing a capital stabilization fund. We're also working with the Joint Water Works. To have them establish an enterprise fund to better account for their operations. Also for them to establish a stabilization fund. Same thing with the sewer department. The town accountant and I are meeting with the sewer commissioners. I think it's actually next. Next week. To further discuss what the enterprise fund would look like. But I'm anticipating they'll be in support of it. And then the same thing with them, the stabilization fund. The budget. Putting money into OPEB and putting money into stabilization. These two things I want to highlight, you know, that's, those are items we normally do in normal times. Last year. You know, was an extraordinary difficult budget year, and we had to tap into a lot of one-time revenues to help balance the budget. Including taking money out of OPEB and stabilization. So this year, you know, we're not recommending taking anything further out and. On the contrary, contrary, we're looking at putting a little bit back in to help. Help replenish what we took out to a certain degree. But that is obviously a big policy, you know, decision for. You, you know, for the finance committee and for a town meeting because. As I was talking to Dr. Cron and Jane Hackett earlier today about the budget. You know, it's, it's still raining out, you know, as, as it refers to a rainy day fund. But again, you know, you can't keep taking one-time funds out. It just won't last. I think I'm going to probably take Article 11 off. That was putting. A little bit of free cash into the capital stabilization fund and, and talking to Biz. The town accountant, we think that money is actually going to be needed more to help our snow and ice deficit. But we do want to, Article 12 would be. Reappropriating or transferring money from those appropriated last year for a fire truck. That the fire department is not actually going to purpose, not actually going to purchase. And transfer that money into a capital stabilization fund. As we talked about at the last meeting, to help save up, to actually outright purchase a fire truck that we don't have enough funds to do this year. Revolving funds. And then, then we get into a lot of the different capital articles. I think you've seen all these before. Won't read them all, but I'm certainly really in support of Article 14, which is finishing off that recycling. Center road. Some other highway department, road improvements, town capital projects, police roof. Article 21 is newer compared to some prior meetings, which is purchasing new voting. Equipment, voting machines, as well as the poll, the, the technology that you use to check in at the polls. That's something that the assistant town clerk. In conjunction with our town accountant and IT director all feels really critical. We do this year. The machines we have are. Old outdated. They no longer make them and they no longer make parts. So we got to make sure we keep the elections going. The school articles, their annual technology upgrades. And at the time I printed this, I didn't have a dollar amount, but I. I do have the, the dollar amount now for the school. Vehicle leases, it's going to be $70,000. I'll go over that in a few minutes, but that number is confirmed and the school department is on board. I talked about the police cruisers, take that from the marijuana funds. Then a, a number of, oh, the Article 25, I think we talked about before, which is an authorization. That all the member communities, the South Shore VOTEC are being asked to make. To authorize. VOTEC School to work with the MSBA with their statement of interest to do a roughly $18 million series of projects for improvements to their buildings. There's no financial impact on FY22, but they just need the authorization now so they can keep progressing. And I. I did forward a memo from the superintendent to all of you. Earlier this afternoon that outlines this in much more detail. A number of articles from the, the Joint Water Works, putting a little bit into their new stabilization fund. Purchasing things, making a lot of different necessary improvements and repairs. Similar with sewer, establishing an enterprise fund, transferring some money into stabilization. Continuing to find the next phase of their wastewater treatment plant engineering study. It's, it's important. We keep those studies moving forward because we know. Down the road, we're going to have a very significant infrastructure project we have to do there. Then we get to the Community Preservation Act. Well, actually, I should have backed up Article 45. I think I mentioned that's just placing an open space restriction on the hearts of parkland that we bought last year. The regular CPA allocations and then purchasing the land that abuts Reed's Pond at Spring Lake Cemetery. This would include the maximum amount that we purchased it for, plus an amount for legal fees, closing costs, that type of thing. We'd like to have the authorization now in case we're able to do it. There is a chance the title work does not come back clean enough for us to purchase. In that case, we don't go through with it and we can rescind this vote at a later time. Rather than not. Rather than lose a year of time in case it does come back clean, we thought, let's get the authorization now. Article 48 is that general bylaw I mentioned about police details. Flood plane bylaw update. That was something we were ready to do last year. FEMA pulled the plug at the last minute, so we have an updated one for this year. And then the last article is the one that Jen went through earlier for the zoning overlay district. Mixed use overlay district. And that is. A quick run through of all the warrant articles. Anybody can think of anything I forgot or anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just one question. Sorry, my phone's going off as well as I speak. So on the social VOTEC, the $18 million authorization. So like, it looks like in reading the memos that they've been applying to the MSBA, but they have not been invited in. So like, it looks like the $18 million authorization would, so like actually allow them to. So like allow the school to be able to fund the capital and the building issues themselves. And borrow and charge back the towns for it. Oh, and I get while. Oh, and I get why they would want to do that because no one wants to let. All like the flood capital build up and build up and build up. I, I'm just wondering out loud though, do we have any idea why after five years the MSBA hasn't allowed them in?
I think that they are optimistic they will get in. I think they, I think they feel that they sort of need this authorization to, to keep moving forward, but I, I think that they are very optimistic that they will. That was my understanding from my last conversation.
Oh, yeah, like, and if they're not, I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do as a town. So. Oh, like anyone else. Like would be able to do to help them with the MSBA because I mean, if they're able to get funding for 50% of that, that decreases our burden as well.
Right. I mean, I hear you and I can reach out to them again, but they've not articulated that they're hitting a stumbling block or that they need any assistance. As, as you all know, you know, it's a slow process. So I, I hear you and I can double check that, but I, I don't, I don't think that they're having problems.
I can touch on this a little bit, just going through it twice with, with the town. You know, there, every year, there are, there are more. Schools in, in districts looking for money than what the, the funds are available. It's. It's truly been a need base. And I, I think with VOTEC. To their hindrance. On this, they've actually done a good job of maintaining their school. And one of the things with the MSBA is you get. You can kind of get penalized if you have a school that's not that old. It was, I think in 68. They've done a good job of maintaining it. So they continue each year to. To put their case forward. But, you know. When you, when you come with a 85-year-old elementary school or 100-year-old school, it takes precedent over a school that. You know, in the scope of things is a little newer and quite honestly, that they've done a good job of maintaining. I think it's been one of their, one of their problems.
Oh, yeah. No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Where are we? Okay, so you did the warrant articles budget update.
Yep. So I'm going to try to share my screen. I'm just going to show. The. Actually, you know, let me make sure I have the right version up here. Bear with me for one second. You know, I don't, I'm sorry about that. I'm usually. Here we go. Sorry about that. I'm just going to show, I think, one page. I'm trying to blow this up a little bit because I've gotten feedback from. Public that they can't always read the numbers. On the screen. So I'm trying to make this a little bit better. You can all see that. So. What I wanted to talk about is. Some of the updates from what you saw a couple of weeks ago. So. On the revenue side. Now that we've had an additional marijuana dispensary. Open up. That's health circle. We've updated on the revenue side a little bit more on the local receipts. We've also added in the overlay surplus. And as the board knows, the overlay is the amount that the. Board assessors sets aside for abatements and exemptions. So they formally released $100,000. On the, on the overlay. So we have that shown on the left side. On the expense side. And I want to just make sure. Are you still, can you all still see the, the spreadsheet? Trying to make sure we're looking at the right thing. Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you. On the expense side, we've had a number of our expenses go up. We've got a new number for our county retirement, which has gone up over $100,000. Our health insurance. Estimate is increasing and it's, I want to highlight that's not associated with premiums. That's associated with the number of people. That are eligible to receive health insurance. And our property and liability insurance has also increased. A portion of that property and liability insurance. However, is for something that we're intentionally doing, which is getting additional cyber coverage on the town. Just making sure that in the event, knock on wood, and we don't ever want this to happen, but any kind of ransomware attack. You know, the town will be, you know, fully protected. Probably the biggest. Thing that will look different to you guys in, in, in looking at. Budget detail is rather than have. Wage increases that I'm in the process of negotiating now with the unions. All spread out amongst each and every employee and each and every department. We've, we've kind of pulled that into one line in the Board of Selectmen budget called wage adjustment account. And my thinking there is, we know we're in the process of negotiating with the unions. So it doesn't really help my negotiating position to show my cards and have all the detail, you know, listed right there. So the way we're, I want to try to handle it. Now is in line with how many other communities do it, which is if there's somebody like, say, my position. Or any individuals that have an individual employment agreement, those actual numbers are in the line item. But for everything else, I have an amount, you know, that's included in this wage adjustment account. Which, once all the contracts are settled, we can use that amount. For, for all those colas, all those wage increases for both the unions as well as the non-union employees. That don't have individual employment agreements. I mean, the town accountant and I have been communicating a lot with Dr. Cron. And Jane Hackett, and I just want to highlight, you know, this is going to be a very difficult budget year for the school department. And while they, they do have. You know, access to additional state aid and federal funds and grants and all that type of thing. It's still going to be a very hard year for them to manage and we recognize that and, you know, we are working. Closely with them. As I mentioned earlier, when we were going through the, the. The list of the warrant articles, you know, we're not recommending using any additional one-time funds again this year. We're not recommending taking money out of stabilization. And as I mentioned earlier, we're actually looking to put back $100,000 back into stabilization to help replenish some of what we took out, took out. But I know these, these are tough decisions, you know, in tough times when, when both sides, you know, the schools and, and on the town side, we're having to make cuts. My, my plan, my hope is to. Have the final budget to the Board of Selectmen, to you on the 16th. So it'll be your next meeting. And then the next day, the next day would be Wednesday, the 17th, and so it would go to the Finance Committee. Now. There's the $1.9 trillion stimulus package is pending with the feds. And my understanding is, you know, a good portion of that. Will go to school districts throughout the country and then some portion of that may also go to local governments as well. That's one thing that could help mitigate the impact of what we're talking about here. In addition, we're working closely with the school department who's fighting aggressively to help fix that Student Opportunities Act formula. To help restore the significant funding that we lost in the governor's budget. We were expecting another $800,000. If we got what we expected. We wouldn't be looking at tough times right now. So, you know, I talked to Biz about this a bunch today and we both feel comfortable that if we get something that's 100% definitive. That, you know, includes some substantial increased funding to the town within the next couple of weeks. We can look at adjusting all of this at the last minute and try to change it all in time for, for a town meeting. But barring that, which I think it's likely that it won't happen in the next couple of weeks. I think we should just plan on a special town meeting in the summer because I think we do anticipate that between. The federal stimulus package and hopefully some improvements to the Student Opportunities Act and the state budget. That we will see some significant increase funding to the town and, and we can restore some of this. And the town side, you know, really all we're looking at are, you know, is some kind of modest wage increase. You know, we're not hiring new people. And on the school side, again, they have a number of different. Avenues of funding, but you'll see if you just look at the education line. You know, there's a year-to-year decrease, which is going to be very difficult for them. And we understand that that's, that that's going to be hard. That's where we're at as of today. I hope my rambling wasn't too much rambling and it made some sense. And I'll, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have, but we can. We can also get into, you know, more detail on any final questions you have in two weeks.
Hey, anybody have any, any questions for Doug on the budget?
So. Yeah, excuse me, I'm, I'm actually alive. Don't worry about me, but I know, but seriously, one of the things. So in terms of the school funding, I mean, unfortunately, it looks like we are in good company. So in terms of how the enrollment issues are affecting school districts across the state, we're not alone in that. So, and, so like in all the last two months, it's been touted. So that FY22 would be the first year that the Student Opportunities Act would be funded. However, like today, there was a budget hearing and it came out that one of the, one of the ways that is helping the state and. Oh, like in terms of funding the, the Student Opportunities Act in the budget is because enrollment has actually decreased statewide in schools by around 4%. So that actually based on the educational formula. That's actually saving the state, I want to say around $100 million. So like in all that burden therefore is coming on our back, just going on the backs of local cities and. So like in all that burden therefore is coming on our back, just going on the backs of local cities and towns. So when I, so I think that's frankly disingenuous at best really for the state to be able to say that's the Student Opportunities Act is being funded. Yes, it's being funded, you know, on the backs of cities and towns and we oh, in terms of a town between the school department and the town. Oh, essentially trying to real oh, like I was essentially trying to rob Peter to pay part or do it. So when frankly, in many aspects, we'd be better off without the new law taking effect. So I actually want to really thank Jane Hackett for her work in this. She has been diligent as heck. I actually participated on a chapter seventy workshop with Jane about a week and a half ago now. So, but again, I mean, so thankfully we're in good company. So like, and I've talked to Senator Keenan about this as well. So like, I think there is hopefully going to be movement to try to address this. But I mean, for the state generally speaking, to be able to say they're funding the first year of the Student Opportunities Act. So it's a little bit of splitting hairs in my opinion. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mike. And in my discussions with Dr. Cron and Jane, you know, I think it was a, a large number of towns that, that are in the same situation with us, you know, I, I forgot the exact number, but it was certainly over a hundred. And I think what, what they were looking at, other towns were also looking at was maybe trying to get some kind of hold harmless. This is all related to COVID, these, you know, these changes in enrollment. So yes, I agree with everything you said.
Anybody else have any questions?
And then there's one more budget thing I could go over, Mike, if that's all right. I'm going to share my screen one more time here. I thought I would just share with you the latest version of our proposed uses of free cash because just a couple of numbers have changed. So again, we have, we have a few items that we need to do to, to help close that FY twenty-one and, you know, as you've seen by the recent storms, you know, our current snow ice deficit is up to over three hundred and sixty-one thousand. So we're bumping that up a little bit. Here's where we're putting a little bit of money back into OPEB and stabilization. And I should have just, I should have just asked this as a question more to you all earlier. You know, from the beginning Biz and I have talked about regularly that we're both very conservative when it comes to budgeting. So, you know, this is our approach. Last year we took took use of one-time funds to balance the budget because COVID hit us right at the end of our whole budget process. This year we had more time to plan. So we're not recommending using one-time funds again. And I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page with all of you and that you, you didn't have different direction that you wanted to give me about the use of one-time funds. Okay. Obviously you let me know if you do, but I just want to make sure, you know, we're in alignment.
Yeah, Doug, I don't, I don't know about the rest of the board members, but, but you know, that was, that was a one-time thing and, and I think it's important that we continue to put towards, to the stabilization, build that back up again.
And thank you, Mike. And obviously please, if, if the board has a different perspective or wants to give me different direction, you know, please let me know as soon as possible. The accounts hold back, we're just highlighting this. This is actually down from a previous version. This again is just being conservative, not spending every penny. This is what helps us generate future free cash as well as have things available in case of emergencies. Then these are simply just all the, the capital articles that we talked about earlier. That's the seventy thousand for the school vehicle leases that we talked about. The police cruisers, we just have listed here to show that we're funding it, but it's coming from the host community agreements. And then the water and sewer articles showing what the remaining balances would be in their enterprise funds, once we, once we turn them into enterprise funds. So I just thought I'd show you the, the use of free cash as well.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on. Thank you, Doug. Other old business not reasonably anticipated?
I have none.
Okay. Town administrators, important correspondence.
Thanks, Mike. So, you know, I was just thinking, as I mentioned, the snow and ice deficit going up, you know, it's sort of funny. I, I always heard before I started about what a good job the Rockland Highway Department does plowing. But I really witnessed it this past storm when I was up here because in Rockland, you know, the roads were cleared down to pavement and as soon as I crossed the town line, it was a mess. And so I just wanted to, wanted to publicly thank the highway department and for what a really outstanding job they do plowing and sanding and treating the roads at every storm. We are very fortunate to have them. So shout out to the highway department. I also want to thank Gino, our IT director. He received another cybersecurity awareness grant from the state. So again, this kind of goes hand in hand with the, the cybersecurity insurance policy I talked about. And I should have mentioned that that, that cybersecurity insurance policy is not just simply us writing a check and signing up for something. Gino had to do quite a bit of work to document and demonstrate all the actions and measures that he's taken over the years and put in place. Because they won't just insure anybody. You have to actually be in a good position to be a good risk for them to even take you on. And then he's done a lot of good work in, in that regard. And part of that are is requesting these types of state cybersecurity awareness grants. So there's training that the state does for us. They actually probe us and test us and try to, try to breach the system or send phishing emails and, and see who clicks on them or not. So it's a, it's a really good thing he's doing because this is the way networks get penetrated. Generally, what, what I've been doing these, these past two weeks, it's been, you know, the budget. And I want to thank the town accountant. Elizabeth Seleski, this is done a fantastic job helping me with the budget this year. Started working on the warrant, which we've already gone over, the, the list of warrant articles. We, we already talked about the COVID vaccine and reopening planning. That took quite a bit of time. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, we started union negotiations, which they're always tough, but certainly in the middle of a financial crisis, in the middle of a pandemic, it makes trying to negotiate multi-year collective bargaining agreements even tougher. So it's been a busy few weeks, but that's all I got for now.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing tonight, last in the the back and forth, shall I say, of the conversation earlier. Like I did want to take a moment I like and express our condolences to Eleanor Cole, who was one of the council on aging board members who recently passed away unexpectedly. Like I think all of us probably knew Mrs. Cole and she was an amazing lady. Just was Rockland to a T. I had her, actually back in the day, she was a teacher's aide in the school. In the school department, which is where I got to know her. And then in my, you know, young twenties, hanging out at the, the senior center and different things I've done. I showed up, we did the cotton eye Joe together and so in other different things and I probably couldn't do the cotton eye Joe anymore. But, but she was just an amazing lady and I want to just say how sorry I am for her loss. All I can, my thoughts and our condolences really go out to her family. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Suckman Penny.
Thank you. You know, it's been almost a year since our world has, has changed dramatically. And while I think we still have many, many months ahead of us of you know, still not back to the normal. It was great to see today that the state is having conversations about going into phase four and that we as a board, you know, a year later, are having those conversations about trying to get back to be as normal as possible. You know, I know so many people have been impacted. I know me, my family, myself, we certainly have been. But it just, the what we've gone through is, you know, as a country, as a community over the last year, I think these little, these little milestones are, you know, something to get excited about. We can't stop being diligent and wearing masks and socially distancing, but I personally, while Mike, you know, this will be a, a little bit of a challenge for me. Because of all the traveling, but I think it's the right step, step in the right direction. So that's it.
Thank you, Rich. Suckman Ryan.
Yeah, a couple of things. Everyone, I give a warm welcome to Lisa Landry, our acting town clerk who, like I mean, who's going to be elected because she has no competition in the election coming up in April first. So she's going to be our next town clerk and congratulations to her. And I know she's going to do a great job. Steve Savicki, he resigned as a sewer commissioner, I guess. I want to thank him for his work he's done for the town. He's a good guy. He's he'll be missed. That's all I can say. And to my old pal, John Rogers. Wherever you are, John, we hope you're feeling all right and feeling good and that there's lots of us that thank him for, for where we are today because many years ago, I asked John to answer the call and he stood tall and, and took on the job as administrator when we needed somebody and and, you know, his health isn't been the best of late and we just want to let him know that we appreciate the fact that all the stuff that he's done for the town of Rockland and, and where to go from here, you know, but we're with him, John, and we'll be talking then. That's all I got.
Thank you, Eric. Vice Chairman Naiman.
All my colleagues actually touched upon everything that I was going to mention. So with that being said, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you, Kara. And I actually, I don't have any comments tonight as well. Just, you know, a little bit to, to Rich's point, you know, even though we're, we're taking some steps forward towards the, hopefully the end of this pandemic as, as people continue to be vaccinated. It is still important to remember that, that it is still ongoing and to take the proper precautions and you know, anything that we voted tonight, you know, it's with the, the proper precautions in mind as far as social distancing and wearing masks. So you know, continue to look out for yourself and look out for each other. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. And a second, all those in favor, Vice Chairman Naiman.
Yes.
Suckman Ryan.
Yes.
Suckman Mullen.
Yes.
And Suckman Penny.
Yes.
And myself. Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.